I'd like to have a crowd out tonight, Madam Secretary, could you call the door please?
Mr. Cathy.
President.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Here.
And here. At this time, we will ask if anyone has anything they'd like to say, if it's not on the agenda, you're welcome to come forth and say it. Okay, hearing no one, we will move into our business agenda. Item A, number one, consider adoption of a resolution approving and authorizing execution of the memorandum of understanding with the Independent School District Number Fifteen of Etoka County, Oklahoma, Etoka Public Schools, approving and authorizing execution of the sales tax agreement with said school district pertaining to the use of certain sales tax revenue and containing other provisions related thereto. I am going to turn this over to Mr. Thornley at this moment. Mr. Thornley, go ahead.
Okay. I'm pretty much going to write my part in a rule which is not popular and because I don't really like to hear myself talk country, a lot of people might believe. Can you hear me? Okay. You can hear me, I'm talking about your next door neighbor there. Can you hear me now? We don't.
It's on.
It's on.
If I speak in that, does that help?
Yes.
Okay, we'll try that. Basically, how I view things at the moment, and anybody can correct me if they want to, we have two council members who were actively for this, we were having two council members, I think, who were not for this, and then left me, and that still leaves me. And I've had a lot of mixed emotions about this. The first time it came up was when Mr. McAdams came and wanted a core sample of the soccer field, that was the first time I heard about this, and I wasn't real thrilled about that, and I was the only no vote. And after that, I'm going to speak to him and explain to him that that's his vision, it's not my vision for Etoka, but by the same token, I can't say that my vision is the best for Etoka. When it came up to decide whether what we're going to do with this, it would appear to me that there was enough interest in it, so we should let the people decide, and that's what we did. The citizens voted in a very close race, and I think it's really a good sign of our council, and I think that's pretty much representative of the city of Etoka, because it's just very fast. But it did pass, and I'm very pragmatic about that, because at this point in time, to say that we are not going to allow this or not to allow them would be wrong, I think that would open us for a lawsuit, and I don't think we need that. I am more concerned about making certain that people in Etoka, that this doesn't divide the town, and I don't think it will, and I hope it won't. But nonetheless, this is a democratic way. We did it exactly how it should be done, it went to the people, and they voted. So, this is going to go through. I'm very pragmatic about this. The proposal that we originally had was for nine million dollars, and when I first heard of this, I think one of my biggest objections was where it was going to be, because my vision would not be to put it out there at the ballpark. But Mr. McAdams was very upfront about that, that it would cost, for the best estimate, a million dollars more if it was at the school. And after this passed, the school had a open session for people to express their opinion as to where it should be, and I went to that, and I don't recall one single person saying that it should go anywhere but at the school. So then the school board decided to put it at the school, which costs more money, but it's a more logical place for many reasons. One, by seeing we'd have to do something with the soccer field, and it's a non-soccer field, and we spent a lot of money putting that up, and we would have to do something there. So it makes more sense to me, but that's what everybody that showed up at that meeting suggested. So, when you hear it went from six million and then it goes up, the problem, big part of the problem is, nobody is wanting to know exactly how much this is going to cost until it's built, because it is not legally possible to know. In order to try to keep things from a buddy system, to try to keep things at the lowest things that it can be, the law requires that it has to be bid. So until those bids come out, we will not know how much this will cost, and that's just government. It is designed to make it the cheapest way to build it. You can't just go out and find a friend that says, okay, I'll build the whole thing for X amount of dollars and just give it to him and he'll do that, it just doesn't work that way. So, everything we've been presented is estimates, but at some point in time, there has to be an amount of loan, and that's what we're here for tonight. My suggestion is, there are two that I asked the city attorney to do, and actually we have three, one for nine million, one for eight point two five, which was my suggestion for the school, which is less than what they want, but the best estimate that we have given at this point in time would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McAdams, but I believe it was seven point five million plus an extra ten percent, which would make it... Their final cost is eight million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and that is, at this point, once again, an estimate. Personally, I still find that too high. My suggestion would be eight point two five million. That, I worked for a judge one time, that said, when he did divorces, if one side seemed happy, another side seemed upset, he knew he did something wrong, but if both of them were upset, then he felt like he had made the best decision. I think it can be built for less than this, but by the same token, I think that the people voted on something. This figure wasn't given, figure wasn't known, it's higher, but I think it's reasonable because I think there's cost in there. And one thing that one school board member discussed with me, and there's some merit to that, is that almost every project that's been built in Etoka, it can be an overestimate. Because, once again, you estimate these things, and you give your best estimate, but you don't know how much it's going to cost until it comes in. But, I think nine million is too much. I don't think they'd be able to build the stadium that they would need for a seven or a seven and a half million. So, my thought is, is that we compromise, have a figure for the school loan of eight point two five. Now, there's another matter, the way we can do this, and I may let Mr. Thompson explain this better than I can. The end result is also for the city and the school on the one cent sales tax when it's paid off. There are going to be some things that the city needs, that, one thing that we all do not want, and I think, I can speak for at least the majority of the council on this one, is, and pardon me for doing so, but I don't think any of us really want to see any other taxes or rates increases. We are having problems with the water, and we need to have some money for managing grants to get that done. I think all of us are concerned, certainly, that we have nice, good clean water, and we went through months of groundwater last year. And, every municipality has water problems, it's a black hole, it's just, and the way that's handled is by rates increase, and I don't want to see that. We could do this loan so that there would be an extra five hundred thousand dollars, that the school would actually repay that amount, so we would give more money upfront to the city. And I'll let you explain that in more detail than I have, because I don't think I've done a very good job.
Well, basically, there's, there's three options that are, have been discussed. There's an eight point two five million that you previously mentioned, there is the eight point seven five million that has the five hundred thousand dollars that I'll discuss here in just a moment, and then there's the nine million dollar option that is consistent with the school district's plan for the project. The ordinance and resolution that was approved by the council and passed by the voters allowed for a perpetual tax to pay for the cost of sports complex improvements. It was a statute that was passed in two thousand and ten by the legislature that allows for municipalities to support the school districts that are entirely within their corporate city limits. That statute says that the voters can pass a sales tax resolution, and that that money can be set aside to the school district for a specific purpose. And there's been case law interpretations of that, that statute since two thousand and eleven, and it's withstood judicial scrutiny, and it's, you know, in my belief, it's a, it's a good, it's a good piece of legislation because it allows municipality to support a school district and have with sales tax revenues and not just with property tax and monies that come from the state. So, the resolution that was approved by the voters said that this perpetual tax would set aside monies to the school district, and that any monies that were not necessary for the financing of the improvements, of the sports complex improvements, would be set aside to the City of Etoka General Fund. Once the financing was completed, once the financing was paid for, project was completed, then those monies go to, entirely to the City of Etoka, except for up to twenty-five percent, which would be provided back to the school district for maintenance, operation, upkeep, and so forth. The second option that you have available would provide, the, the loan from the school di, for the school district would be eight point seven five, and basically, they would borrow enough money to make their first year's principal and interest payments on the improvements. So they have, they already have that money to make their first year's payment, borrowed. So the sales tax that would be collected in that first year could be utilized by the City of Etoka for any projects that we see fit. That idea was discussed between, I believe it was discussed at the last council meeting of June twenty eighth, Jordan Smith, the financial advisor for the school district, and Terry Adams, the bond counsel, and I've discussed that issue. There's policy considerations within it that are within your purview, but legally, it can be done. What that does is basically serves as like an advance on the ability to capture sales tax revenues for the city to utilize for public improvement projects, and still allows for the school district to satisfy their first year's debt obligation.
Did everyone understand that?
I have one comment. What we voted on does not limit it just to the sports stadium, the football stadium.
Understand, ma'am?
Go ahead.
Understand.
It says, for whatever, forever. Pretty much.
You know, I'm sorry, what's, what's your question?
On the ballot that we voted on, none of this information was available.
You're right.
And it's very, very vague, very vague, and no word on here that this say anything about the city getting the money, it says it will be turned over to the school for improvement and facilities, what, renowned?
Should say up to twenty-five percent to the school.
It's, it's not on without, is what I'm saying.
And with all due respect, I'll, I'll take the chair back over. This has been my beef, if you will, since day one. We don't have that information. These figures are nebulous. It's amazing to me that you say six million, first of all, it was all predicated on six million, I think that's what the people, when they voted, that's the figure that was bandied about, and then all of a sudden, that's risen. So, some of you guys that are peacemakers and can make me understand this, please do, but I mean, I, again, I've said from day one, please give me a list of things, tell me how this is going to work out, so we have no amended tax.
Can I do this then?
Absolutely.
One thing that I will say about Mr. McAdams is, he made it perfectly clear to us at the council meeting, and also at the meeting that was held, the public meeting that the school held that I went to, was that if it were located at the school, it would be approximately, and that was an approximate, million dollars more than it would be if it were at the sports complex. And I could be wrong, but I thought it was six and a half, and maybe it was six, but Eric, this is what I recall, was six and a half. Mary Watson's shaking her head, so we're going to, if she agrees, then I agree. I agree with Mary Watson on some things.
One thing he did.
I know, we'll discuss that later. If we had the six and a half million dollar figure, and we were told that if it were at the school, it would be another billion, then that brings it to seven and a half million dollars. And that's where I also came up with the figure of the eight and a quarter, because that's approximately ten percent more, which I think would be a fairing amount past that. I think you're looking at an amount that would not be fair to the people who voted for this, thinking that it was going to be somewhere in that neighborhood. But we were told six and a half million if it were at the ballpark, and approximately seven and a half million if it were at the school. Now, granted, in a perfect world, maybe we should have all known beforehand, but the school made that decision after the tax was passed. But I think everybody had that information, that it would be one or the other when they voted on it.
I think a lot of people didn't have any information, except what they read on this ballot, and it really does not have any limitations on whatsoever. But those twenty-nine people who put it over may not have any idea how many millions were gained in all this. They just got big on this.
There were several meetings that I came to before the, before the election occurred, and I think I heard these numbers, I heard the six and a half, I heard the seven and a half, I heard the eighty, twenty, or the seventy-five, twenty-five. I heard those as a voter, you know, or somebody as a citizen of this community, they were open meetings, everyone had the opportunity to get that information.
And I can answer your question to a certain extent. Normally, on the ballots, they read like that, and that's just...
Okay, I, I like the, I mean, while we, the bill has passed, we can't, we're not going to do anything about the bill, I think what we need to do is decide, what we're, you know, I understand that people didn't have things about what happened, and what, that it was vague, but it passed. The democracy was that it passed. So what we need to do is decide tonight what we want to do about the money, and, and...
We need to put some amounts on it.
I agree, Jerry, I agree, but, but, I mean, just going back and forth about, I have the beef this, I have the beef that, the beef is gone.
Right, it's passed.
It is.
But at the same time, we're up here to do what the people voted for, and they didn't vote for nine, or ten, or eleven, or twelve million dollars.
And, and it might not be that, so, that's what I'm saying.
We don't, we don't worry nothing. Are we going to limit this to so much and stop there?
What I'm saying is that...
And you cut back.
We need to decide, you know, the beef is already passed, and, and we spent too much time, that happened in February, which I was even here on the, it came to the council, and the council decided, okay, we're going to vote for this, then it was voted on, and it was passed. Did that, did that not happen? Okay, then what we're here today to do is to decide. We're not here to decide who has the beef or whatever, we're, we're here to decide the amount, and if we keep doing this back and forth, we'll, we won't decide on it. We need to, you know, we need to decide what we're going to do, because I know, there's, there's a lot of hurt feelings, that if we keep going back and forth, we're never going to get anywhere on it.
But we may have to shift lanes instead of catting.
And, and I'm not saying that that's not going to happen, Jerry, I'm just saying that we need to drive something.
True, my truth.
Can I ask one question that I haven't been able to get answered? Okay. What happens if we do not collect enough sales tax to meet the payment on the loan? How will we take care of that, the schools?
Be dragged, but the school, this is not on the city's behalf, the city has nothing to do with the financing of this project, that is solely on the school system.
Okay, so why can't the school can't do it?
If the school, if the city does not bring in enough sales tax to appropriate the money to the school to make their payment, it is on the school's part to rework their financing to...
Okay, so why can't they not make that?
Then they, then they...
The loan would be...
Bring the money in the right time.
I can answer that question for you. The loan would have to be redone.
Restructured?
Yes, so that what would happen is that the payout would be over a longer period of time than what it would be originally. But it, that sales tax would be there, so it would come from that same sales tax money, the school would have to restructure. Now, they are limited to seventy, eight, excuse me, eighty percent of the last year's amount of collections. So, there's, that's already built in in case it does drop. And quite frankly, if it dropped more than twenty percent, we'd be in a heap of trouble in all kinds of ways, and that's not anticipated. It, granted, things can happen, and we understand that, but that's why municipalities on sales tax, or anybody borrowing money from sales tax, and all the finance people will not finance more than the payment being eighty percent of the prior year, because it is an extreme thing that would occur to a city for their sales tax to drop that much. So I don't think that would be much of a concern.
Okay, good.
He's steering, I'm just going to say, was steering this back to the money issue. I, I don't know how you arrived at a figure, and again, there's a lot of space between six million and nine million. But I would be happy to entertain someone's idea. Yes, sir?
First of all, thank you very, 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 to the description that this is going on, but to answer your question, Mr. Merrick, you will look effectively at hand now, you'll notice the very first number, the construction cost, the first number in bold, which says seven point one eight million dollars. In fact, that is actually less than our personal initial amount, because our initial amount, let's say if we stick to the six point five million dollars at the complex. That was six point five million dollars for construction. We all understand that any kind of building thing, there's other fees involved, architects, engineering, things of that nature. This is still the original statement, the statement has not changed one bit since we proposed this. It hasn't, we didn't all of a sudden add five hundred seats to it, the statement has, it's stayed exactly the same. The costs have gone up, as you mentioned, because at least, I shouldn't say, at least approximately at a million dollars because we moved the site. So that would automatically through to seven point five million, and if you look, we're still below seven point five million at the current site, but then we go down below there and explain the fees, that we don't have a choice, we're required with those choices. But the one thing that I want to tell the council, and everybody here, the stadium has not changed one bit since the, not the windback, it has changed because of the different sites, the fieldhouse would have to be reconfigured compared to what one that we had configured at the sports complex, because of the location. But the stadium is still the same size, the track is still the same size, there has been nothing, and all that has changed other than location. Did that answer your question?
I would say that, you know, the concerns about the overall cost of the project, I feel that, you know, the citizens have elected us on this council and the school board members to be prudent and competent people, to do what's in the best interest of these entities, and to be as conservative as possible with the construction of this project. I feel like I've been very involved in this since the very beginning, I feel like that the items and the equipment and the design is not a, not what I would call a Cadillac, it is just expensive to build things in this day and time. And we're talking about a facility that's not going to last five or ten years, but it's going to be in our community for the next forty, fifty, hopefully sixty, seventy years like our last one. And it is expensive to build commercial facilities. I've grown up in a construction family, and I have seen about every kind of commercial building, and worked on about every kind of commercial building, and rarely do you ever see one that's inexpensive. There is a lot of components that go into these, and same way with this project. I feel like some of the finishes that are on this are modest, there's nothing extravagant that I have seen that would go into this complex, it's just a very, I feel like a low maintenance facility, I feel like that it's something our community can be proud of, but yet not over the top. And I also look at these budget numbers that they have, and Mr. Thornley, well, the eight and quarter, eight point two five million dollars, I understand trying to carve some of that back. Very rarely do we have one that comes in on, on a budget that hits, I mean, you have material costs that change daily, labor costs are fluctuating, but the biggest thing that drives it, the majority of this is your materials, and those materials vary greatly from month to month. So, this estimate is due greatly to the, the materials that are involved in this, and the times that you lock in your pricing on those materials, it can change. So, my concern is that if the school feels like this is their estimate, that they requested nine million, that if we back up to eight quarter million, what, what is, what's the, Mr. Thornley, what's the plan if we, if the school runs over the budget?
You're even back on some things.
I mean, even if, even with price value, with, lost the word, value engineering, this project, I mean, they can go back and try as much as they can out of it, but I feel like they're going to try to be as conservative as possible in the beginning. What, what's our...
Mr. Cathy, it'd be like building a house for ninety thousand dollars, you've got ninety thousand dollars to spend, you, that's how much your mortgage is going to be, you know how much money you're going to have to spend, and maybe you have to make cuts here and there, as the progress goes on, you have to do it, and that's, that's the answer to your question.
Well, the second, the second plan that you have, the eight and three quarter million, the five hundred coming back, that puts them at even less than eight and a quarter, if it's, if, because they said in the last meeting that their payments were structured around six hundred thousand a year on the eight and twenty, so...
You lost me there.
Well, eight point three, eight and three quarter million dollars worth, five hundred thousand of it, we go to make their first year's payment, that doesn't go according to the cost of construction, no.
So, it would still be eight point two five that they would have to give them.
But my understanding from Mr. Smith, when he presented the thing to us last time, he said they were structured in payment around six hundred thousand a year.
That's a million dollar question.
Am I incorrect in that?
Eighty percent of the eight hundred, your last year's sales tax party right at eight hundred thousand, eighty percent of that's going to be six hundred and forty thousand... eighty percent of that's gonna be six hundred and forty thousand, I think. You ever take it?
So, they were backing up to around six hundred, maybe it has some extra cushion. So, that, that still leaves a hundred thousand to come out, but do you see where I'm going with that? This, you're, you're actually, you take out the first year, you end, if you apply the first year's payment to the amount of the loan to make the first year's payment, it's at eight point one five, not eight point two five. So, it further puts the school, uh, in a position where it's difficult to build the facility.
Only not only because they would have to pay back that, they would pay a portion of that at the five hundred thousand dollars on that first note.
But that would come out of the sales tax.
Yes.
Well, there is note, I mean, I understand the concern with keeping it under control, but the resolution and ordinance that was passed by the citizens didn't have the cap on it.
Well, we're not gonna make that amendment, dude.
I'm, I'm not asking for, you know, the, the school has requested of an, an amount and then we're trying, I mean, we're not party to the financing, so we're trimming, we're gonna trim back. I mean, my question is, is while you're trying to pull that number down, they have a number that is five hundred thousand dollars more before it even bids. And if any cost overruns go above that, I don't see how they can build the facility that they have shown the public they're gonna build by trimming over five hundred thousand dollars out of that project.
Well, but that logic, if we gave them nine million and then they're either going to quit.
Exactly, that's my point, was that if it went up past that, that's the same logic. So, I don't, I don't buy your logic.
You cap it at nine million. What their request is, Mr. McAdams, if for some reason, if we were to approve the nine million dollars, if it came in, if, if all the bids were open and you were able to build the stadium for less than nine million dollars, are you borrowing the amount of money that it only takes to build this thing in? Or are you gonna borrow the nine million dollars back?
Answer your question, I think that's what you're saying is whenever we set the finances, uh, uh, one hundred was all down to four nine million dollars once because we don't have to pay interest off. So, as we go along, yes, we would stop at whatever that point is that we have and pay for. So, if, if it's eight point six million, then that would leave four hundred thousand dollars that we didn't borrow, so that wouldn't go into the. But that, that answers your question?
So, even if we approved nine million and they don't use it, then they're not gonna finance the full amount?
Well, really, aren't we just here to not to decide the figure? I mean, we, it's not up to us to police the, it's not our job. That's the way I look at it, we're here to arrive at some figure that's fair and it would be a situation, the way I see it, Mr. McAdams, is that once this figure is agreed upon, then code cost overruns, acts of God, anything else that has to, that's your problem. You know, we can't keep going back to the well.
I, I certainly understand what you're saying, you know, what's the, I, I, I think your question is, well, what's the stopping point? And what, what is the stopping point? And this is why I said that, Mr. Mayor, that whatever the limit is, whatever this, this council decides what that number is, the, there is amount of money, this is a perpetual tax. The, the tax was, was presented to build a sports complex. So, let's say that we're limited to six million dollars. Does that give the taxpayers money back? Does not, that, that gives the city a lot more chance to get money quicker than what does the school and the school's the one that, that went out with the permission of the city to pass the sales tax. So, what we're talking about is we have to build this as, as, as good of a product as we can build and we need to be as cheap as also as it can be because we don't start getting our maintenance money until this thing is paid off, which we all know that after it's paid off, the city now retains, uh, one hundred percent of it with up to twenty-five percent that they can allot back to the school for maintenance and upkeep of the facility. So, by saying six million or eight million or ten million or twelve million does not save one taxpayer one, one cent because it is a perpetual tax. So, by saying that, Mr. Mayor, you're right, you can lend us, but then it's limiting us for the benefit of the city in order to get nine back cash. So, that's kind of a, this doesn't need to be added, sir. This doesn't need, um.
The city's gonna benefit from it.
Yes, sir.
And not in our lifetime.
Mr. Stevens, can you say? Let me press a question, Mr. Stevens, uh, again, I know with, with, uh, I think the financial situation for everybody right now is very tight. Schools, uh, municipalities, everybody, are you, are you saying that the additional, if I'm not mistaken, uh, right now, your sales tax on, is on track for this year to be up around eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which would give you this year, a- as it goes, would give you somewhere around two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-two thousand dollars. Are you saying the city doesn't need that?
I'm saying that.
When you said the city.
I'm just saying we need to be good steward of the, of the money and I think, I think the first mistake was made when it was a tax forever. I think it should have stopped when it was paid for.
Well, it's been.
Huh? Oh, it's been passed. If we, is, is it these three options we got, Eric?
Yes.
Okay, let's just decide on one, one of the three and vote on it. There ain't no use whether or not you can afford it.
Mr. Mayor, please describe it.
Where would that person be? Yes, sir. Come, come forward, Dan.
Thanks for getting out of the hospital. My lawyer's not showing any general fault content here. Some questions, I feel like, legal questions, since I'm a lawyer and I did have that many jobs on this one. And what I wanna remember is, the school district gets hurt all statements. You see the total sales tax is paying for it. What liability does the city of the total have if there's a default on that football that is wrong? And they can't make the payment?
You know, if you sat in this seat, you know that you can't prevent someone from filing a lawsuit. You know how that is? But the reality is, uh, there's a statute that allows for this structure to be in place to provide additional funds for the school district. Those funds have been approved by the voters, it'll be.
Be, uh, quarterly, monthly with the city and have an agreement that whatever the bid comes in, that's all they're gonna spend for it. You're gonna, you have a, you have what they're going to bid. If it comes in at eight million dollars, it looks like me, that's, that's what the bid would be and after that amount is paid back, then the city gets all the money. So, it looks like we ought to work together. I'd like to see the, the city council work with the school district and let's build a really nice facility here. Uh, so, that would be my comment. It was approved. And I would also like to see the city give the school the money now, not try to take a year's worth of it for some city project. There's always gonna be, the city's always gonna need something fixed or repaired and so I would like to see the school have the money available so they can start this project. And I would ask you to work together with them. Thank you.
Do we have that much money to give?
No.
Until the, until the revenues are taken in, until we actually have money flowing? If that's what you're firm.
Well, as you collect it monthly.
Okay.
You're gonna get a monthly collection on it, so.
And appropriate it once a year of the sales. I'd like to make a motion. Is that, is it okay at this time, man?
I'm sorry.
Is it okay at this time, partner? I make a motion that we approve or consider adopting the resolution for the nine million dollars that the school system and the memorandum of understanding uh, for the construction of, uh, the new stadium in that, uh, the fund bid, the nine million bid available for the construction and that, uh, we all the funds would go to the school for, uh, the one thing I did see in this, uh, resolution that, uh, Mr. Johnson, what section would I find on the obligation after the lease is paid?
Uh, that would be as the final paragraph, paragraph six of the memorandum of agreement.
Yeah, going, files discharge of school lease financing, all money's being collected by the city shall be utilized as provided in the enacting ordinance and in that enacting ordinance it, uh, states that up to twenty-five percent of the tax can go back to the school for maintenance of the sports facility. I'd like to have that added to the, uh, motion.
So, um, saying like after ordinance, say.
Just for clarification purposes.
Say comma, including an amount up to twenty-five percent in the school district for.
Thank you, as, as it reads in the original ordinance, that was passed.
What do you think?
I don't, I'm just wanting to make sure it's, it's fine, so there's no question.
You know, the one thing I would say is that that, that resolution and ordinance is gonna be basically the guide by which pre- subsequent councils utilize.
Make sure that everybody's in the understanding that they say, well, we didn't understand that was the proper policy.
Understand, I can, I can include it if you see.
I just, you're our attorney, if you don't feel like.
I, I believe that the language is sufficient because the enacting ordinance, now, what I could say is enacting ordinance number, um, NC five forty-one, so I could, you know, I'm referring specifically to the sales tax ordinance. And then that language is in the sales tax ordinance. That would be the motion.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Stevens.
Hello.
Mr. Ford. Mayor.
Okay. I'm not exactly sure where to go at this time. Mr. We, I guess I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
No, no, I, I would like to do a motion that we do, yeah, the option that was presented to us with the eight point two five to the school with the additional five hundred thousand dollars payment for the total note, eight point seven five million.
Would they go to the school or back to the city? They just want, but, there's five hundred thousand coming back to the city?
Yes.
I just, um.
What are you asking, James? I don't, I don't understand that at all.
Okay, it's a permanent sales tax. And it would allow for the city to get some funds upfront as opposed to waiting until the completion of it. It would give the city an additional five hundred thousand dollars upfront. Would make the total note payment eight point seven five. The school would take five hundred thousand dollars of their note and pay that towards the first payment.
In essence, in essence, what this, what Mr. Foley proposing is item number two, which would provide, uh, note of eight point, eight point seven five million dollars and the school would be borrowing their first year's payment. So, they would hold the first year's payment in reserve and when it came due, they would pay it out of the funds that they borrowed. That would allow the city to accrue the sales tax out of the first year in the amount of approximately a thousand.
Let me, let me ask a question to you, if I may, Mr. McAdams. At one time I discussed that with you, is that a problem as far as the school is concerned? And I know you want more money, but if.
Mr. Foley, I think we knew that it had, had that discussion, certainly did. Uh, as we, uh, since that time, these notes were coming from the architect. I don't know if you and I have talked about that since those numbers have come in, uh, as the paper I just received, uh, today they're asked, uh, they're asking. Um, if the city wants to do that, that, I, I don't know, and certainly I cannot speak for the Board of Education and don't, don't, none of us here can speak for the Board for the London session. But that still leaves us at a deficit of, of building this stadium that we said that we would build. So, we're talking about, then, we're talking about these things that, you know, I think the school certainly has obligation to build what we said we were gonna build and I, I believe what is also being clarified is, once we build what we're gonna build, then that's the end of it. We're not gonna keep trying to go ten, eleven, twelve million dollars, once it's built, it's built. And then all of the money is built. If we, if that's a situation, what you're saying for the city, uh, that's something I think that the, uh, uh, the Board would have to answer that question, myself can't answer that question on that aspect of it. Uh, what we, what we need is to make sure we can build the stadium we told the people. We also understand the city and we, uh, as Mr. McColl said, we wanna be good partners. That's certainly without doubt, uh, make no mistake about that. And if that's something the city needs, I don't get a vote, though, so I can say this, I certainly would have a problem with that, but again, I don't get a vote.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Foley, may I make a recommendation? And I've had, uh, multiple discussions with, um, Jordan Smith, who's the financial advisor for the school district. And one of the things from early in our discussion that I was, uh, directed and, um, I thought was advisable is to, and, and trying to answer specifically concerns from Mr. Stevens, but also from, uh, cer- other members of the council, is that there needed to be some kind of, uh, language included within the memorandum of agreement that served as a cap and or a guide to the school district for the amount of money they could budget for this project. And so, in paragraph two in your memorandum of agreement, I asked for this language to be included and I believe, Jay, that the school reviewed this language and, but in, and it's actually, um, the bottom of paragraph two that says, and, and that should any amount over this stated amount be necessary. Paragraph three, or paragraph two, actually, and then it leads into paragraph three. And that should any amount over this stated amount, which would be nine million dollars or eight point two five or eight point seven five, be necessary to complete any of these affirmation projects, then it shall be paid for solely from funds available to the school district and not from any sales tax proceeds. And that was basically limiting language that I asked for Jordan to, to, um, speak with the school district about. And I understand that, um, that essentially provides a, a hard cap because if the school board approved this memorandum of agreement, that if they hit that ceiling and they had seventy-five thousand dollars and they still needed to complete the project, and that seventy-five thousand dollars, a lot of time at the tail end of the project, so I've been involved in these stadium projects, where that seventy-five thousand at the tail end of the project, a lot of time is paint for the facility, uh, you know, uh, the, the, on a project of, of this school. And you could remove that hard cap and you could include language in there that says. And you could remove that hard cap and you could include language in there that says that, that shall be, and that any amount over this approximated or over this amount necessary to complete any of these affirmation projects shall only be released upon application by the school district and appearance before the Etoka City Council. In essence, what you have at that point is truly a partnership.
Okay, you lost me just a little bit. Are you saying that instead of having a hard cap, saying, hey, if you go over eight point two five or nine million, you're on your own. If, if you've spent and you're significantly done with the project and you need this a little bit more, you can allow a safety valve for them to come back and, and request funds if they need it. Pardon, and bring it before the council. And in that manner, you're able, plus, don't forget, you have the school district or the Board of Education, elected officials supervising this project. You have the construction manager that they're paying to keep these costs in check. You have the bank that has a vested interest in making sure that they come within budget. You have, then if you could put the further constraints of having, you know, for the first year of the project, and I believe it's gonna be a fifteen month project, it, it, thereabouts, but for the first year of the project, you have monthly updates from the construction manager and the school district as to the, you know, we're seventeen percent done, this is what we have next. You know, so you're gonna have an opportunity to have those discussions as the project commence, it continues. But you can remove the hard cap language and.
Let me interrupt you here for a second. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I see the problem being is that the school is going to have to finance an amount. So I don't think you can put this soft cap on it because if they've gone in and said, we're going to finance for, let's say, eight point five million and they need five hundred thousand dollars more, they would have to refinance that note.
Of course they would.
So the amount of the note is going to be the hard cap figure. Would that be semi-correct?
Maybe this discussion, and also to follow, follow up on what Mr. Johnson was talking about. We also have an annual audit. And in that annual audit, they review every one of our bid practices, so that's another layer of transparency that we have. Mr. Thorndyke, is there any way that we can change the language to maybe do both type things, do the upper amount? And then anything that comes under that point, let's just say if we can get it done in eight point five, we take whatever that money is left to apply against the first payment. And if it's more than the first payment, we do that to apply against the principal to get the note down as low as we can. Because that's what all of our goal is, is to get the note down as low as we can because that's when, really for either one of us, it benefits us all better more because of that.
Okay, you lost.
Okay. Do the higher amount of the note, anything when it comes in. We're talking about transparency. The same transparency that y'all have is what we have to have. No, no, nobody can't go spend money without, without y'all's approval, just like I can. So it has to go through the Board. But whenever we get to that point, let's say if we can get it built for eight point five million. And now we still have five hundred thousand, now we have the option to take, to pay the first part of the note off or pay it and drop the principal down. And if the city so wishes for us to, to do it that way, the problem you get into on that aspect is we won't have the project done before the first note is done. You see, at a fifteen year, at a fifteen month note, when I guess we can set the note up however we want it to, but the first payment of the note, if you do it on a annual basis, will not be able to pay out of that because the project won't be finished.
Okay, let me just say this. This was the suggestion, basically, I asked our attorney to talk to your bond guy and see if we could work this out. If we can't, then I would be happy with the eight point two five. I mean, that was my suggestion. It seemed like to me it would, it would benefit, but.
So my, so my question is, if you authorize an eight point two five million, they have the money available to commence the project. They are also given the direction that maybe there needs to be a renewed look at cutting costs if there's any that can be cut. I understand, I understand exactly what you're, what you're dealing with, Jay. But if we remove a hard cap, 'cause as this memorandum reads, if it's eight point two five, and that's it. And that's it. If they need additional funds to finish the project out, which would be, they would recognize that in a year. What's the council's position on the school district coming back before the council and asking for the release of some additional funds? They would have to rework their financing.
Which is false.
I.
Which is different false.
I mean, they could do that anyway. Could they not?
Will not the memorandum of agreement write, read right now, is it?
If at some point in time, I mean, we're approving the note today. So there's nothing to interfere that at some point in time we could not redo our memorandum of understanding. They could always come back to us. Is that not great?
That's, yeah, that's correct, yes.
So, I mean, we don't have to do the five hundred thousand. I'm not hung up on it. I was thinking it would be a benefit to the citizens.
Eight point seven five plan, the way it's structured in this memorandum, undercuts this bid. And I understand everybody trying to keep this in check. The school board, I believe, is doing their absolute best to keep the pricing in check. I don't think they're just, feel like they have an open check, go build whatever they want. But you're undercutting their quota, which is simply a quote by having them.
Okay, let me say this. From get-go, I've seen both sides of this. I really have. For those who say sales tax is unfair, economics one-on-one in college teaches you that the worst tax there is is a sales tax, it's a regressive tax. Hurts the poor, hurts the people on fixed income more than anybody else. So those who are hesitant on that basis, I understand. As this developed, I also saw that we don't have, I started track kids to Durant, to practice. And I went to the stadium one day and, on a winter day in February, and went up there and walked it and it's a lot worse shape than I thought it was. Day one, I see both sides. Today, I see both sides. School wants nine million dollars. But for those who say, hey, that nine million dollars was never discussed, that is correct. It was not. I came up with this figure as a compromise because I came up with this figure of if they said it was out here that was seven and a half million dollars, I've gone ten percent over that, eight and a quarter. That's where I came up with this. Now, granted, the school, I would feel different if we had said, okay, this project may cost up to nine million dollars and the people bugged it on nine million dollars. I would feel different about it. But that was not presented, and I'm not saying anybody's at fault, but that was not presented. So it'd be hard pressed for me to say that if the school had said from the beginning, it may cost nine million dollars if we're out here, I cannot say that that would or would not have passed because we do not know that yet. And I think that there's a good possibility that there are some people who would not have voted for that had they saw that the cost would be that much. So I cannot in good faith vote for nine million dollars. And I'm sorry.
I understand, but I'll go back to the stadium that we presented has not changed. The, we have not changed that at all.
But by the same token, the only thing I ever saw was a stadium on top of our, our field. That just, that was all I ever saw. And I was great detail, so I don't know that anybody really had any great description that you saw. And I realize you went someplace and you looked at one and you know exactly what you're doing, but I never saw those details given to me or to anyone else. So what, all I recall ever being told, incorrect if I'm wrong, is that we have a really nice stadium, X number of seats, and we plan it this way. Well, if, my vote would be different if we had said that it would be up to nine million dollars. And I could in good faith say that's what people voted for. But there were two figures that were thrown out that I recall. Six and a half and an extra million for that, which would be seven and a half. I think it would be fair to give the school more than that, but not as much as they say. I think it's a good compromise and that's for I know. The five hundred thousand dollars back to the city is a more complex thing and kind of esoteric. I think it would help the citizens of Etoka, but I'm not gonna be hung up on that figure, but I am gonna be hung up on the eight point two five.
Okay, what do we need to do? So you're saying not even eight, eight point seven five?
No, eight point, eight point two five, I think is as good as I can, I can do in good faith.
I, I would make a recommendation, if, if you're good for eight point two five, that you make that motion for eight point two five. Because if, if Gary's good for that, I, I, I mean, the reality is, what I don't wanna see happen.
We gotta do something.
You know, I, I, I have a tendency, you know, a lot of city attorneys, they just look at a legal issue. I tend to look at a legal issue and also a policy issue. I think that's part of my job and I think that if we're here, we're all here as a party. What I don't wanna see is this fall apart because of the document that says eight point seven, eight point seven seven A. I think if you have eight point two five and also a recognition that as, as this is a partnership between this municipality and the school district, if they have to have that opportunity to come back, that's just what has to happen.
Question. If we were to vote on the eight point two five, then it goes to the school board for their decision whether they can build the stadium. Correct? If they determine that they can't build the stadium and there is no other resources other than out of the school funds which this tax was passed to build the stadium, what are the implications that we could possibly be looking?
You'd be looking at a lawsuit. You'd be looking at a lawsuit between the school district and the city of Etoka. And I would.
That's not good.
Well, I would think see that.
I would too, and that's not to say if we voted for nine million dollars that somebody else might not also have a taxpayers lawsuit. Saying that we never bugged it on nine million dollars. You're talking about lawsuits, Mr. McGann. I think this is the best compromise because you're in jeopardy one way or the other.
I mean, like I said earlier, I, you can't prevent someone from filing a lawsuit. All it takes is two hundred and twenty-six dollars, you know, so. And, and, and some printer, some printer paper, you know, and a lot of.
But I would say this much, that if the school were to determine that they could not build that for that amount of money and decided to sue us for that, I think when we go back and show that we actually voted to give them more than what was discussed to begin with, that we are safe in that lawsuit. That's my opinion.
I'd feel comfortable.
I would feel comfortable with that, I think you're too.
Is everybody comfortable? This, ladies and gentlemen, this one, I voted against originally. I would love for a brand new football stadium to be built. Would love it. I just don't have faith in this body and that body doing the best thing. Spending the money wisely. This was my problem from the onset. It's so complicated now. Now we're talking about suing each other.
I'm just, I'm just asking one of the possible implications. Mr. McGann?
Yes, sir.
Can I have your attention for a second, please? If there's anyone here for planning and designing commission meeting, it's taking place in the conference room. Started about two minutes ago.
What, I mean, if you proposed a plan, what would have changed that plan to meet an acting order, man, I'm.
I think that would have to be a conversation between us and the office to see what other options would be to make the rainstands and the district stands smaller. We could cut down on, on some market. We could cut down on sidewalks, but you know, I think if you're gonna build a facility, you can make sure you build those without facilities. The, the field has to be smaller. The, obviously the track and the football stadium, the actual thing, the size is what it is on that aspect. So certainly the school board, which you're talking about thousands instead of, I mean, when you talk about that, we could talk in places seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars. Now, what we're talking about, you're talking about significant size of situation.
We need this up. We've sat here and talked all night.
Okay.
Another thing, Mr. Thorndyke, we got to, and I think you mentioned this, is the one thing we didn't see in here, and that may be something we could sort of come back and negotiate with the city about traffic signals. That's certainly gonna be an issue for all of us on that aspect. You know, that's, that's one thing I think that maybe you brought up in the last meeting about traffic signals. I still don't have a price for that. I, I figure, y'all would know much better what it costs to do the traffic signal going to school. That's gonna have, something of that nature is gonna have to be there, you know. So that, that price, again, is, is a price that's not included in, in numbers as we give.
Okay. I move that we do the eight point two five million.
So you're back to the motion again?
Yes.
I'll say.
So I have a motion in a second. Please clarify. Eight point two five million?
Yes.
With cap. Is that what you're saying?
With the cap, without a cap?
I think it's got a cap.
It would be the cap?
It's got a cap, yeah.
Well, it's got, you'd have, you'd have, you'd have a cap of eight, eight and a quarter million. But if, you know, the memorandum of agreement as it's currently written says that that's it, any cost overrun is gonna be borne entirely by the school district. But the understanding would be if they, since we're gonna be meeting monthly on this project, we're gonna know the status of the cost as it accrues and whether we're gonna be in over budget or under budget. So since this is a.
Well, if it's in there, isn't it in there?
Yes, it's, and that's what Brian is trying to clarify with this formally right now.
And I, maybe it got clarified. It didn't to me.
That's why I was trying to make sure.
It would be with the cap. Eight point two five million with the cap. So it's as is currently as of right now.
Am I talking?
Hooked on. The eight point two five is right in front of you.
I mean. But you've got to say, I got one other question before we go to the ground. I'm sorry. If, in eight, eight and a quarter million, if, as this project progresses and the school has done everything they can in their power to shave every cost they can out of the stadium to get it in that budget, and it will not happen, is there any discussion, will this council look at any ideas to change this memorandum of understanding to help? Did you manage my statement? I wanna know that before a vote. Is there any, will this council entertain looking at this memorandum to change it in order to help the school complete the stadium that they're trying to build? I mean, if they show us that they've tried to value engineer this to a degree that they, every degree they can, and still have a stadium that fits their needs that they need, would, would we be entertaining, James, to adding additional money to that to help complete it if there's any, if they cannot accomplish that over that quarter million?
Okay.
Why, why are we calling it cap if it's not a cap?
I think I understand what he's saying, but I'm not sure on your wording. I mean, there is always the possibility that something can happen in the future. There's nothing to prevent that. But if you're going to look at me and say, okay, if they need more money, am I gonna give it to you? I cannot tell you that, Ron. I am not going to say that. I am saying at this point in time, I'm approving eight point two five. Now, that's not to say that something might occur later on in the future, because quite frankly, if you'd asked me when this all came up, I was definitely against it, but by the time I came down forward, I was like, okay, I see why they're doing this whole project. So I can't tell you how I'm going to feel in the future because I do not know what has come up, what they're gonna present. You may think that we need to give more money, and, but I don't want you to say, okay, but you told me we would. I'm not gonna tell you that. But by the same token, I can't tell you that I won't. I cannot predict the future, nor can you ask me a question that could predict the future well enough for me to tell you, yes, in the future, something could happen that could bring, that could have me bring more money? I don't know. I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna focus for Stevens on that. I would have to cross that bridge when it happens. But at some point in time, we have to have a figure. And I know that the school doesn't like this figure, but I also know that people who want six and a half million aren't gonna like this figure. But I think if it's ten percent over the highest figure that I heard, I think that's a fair amount. I think that there's people who certainly say, we never bugged it on. I think that there's people who certainly say, we never voted on a nine million dollar stadium.
That's right.
I would say that. There was no cap on the vote. Exactly. We voted to.
But there was still.
Still wasn't, there still wasn't, there still wasn't a dollar on that on the note.
But it was six and a half million circulated.
That's all right.
Circulated, circulated, but it wasn't.
At the city council meeting. At the city council meeting, the highest figure that we heard was six point five million. I voted yes, because.
Six and a half out here, seven and a half.
I'm sorry, seven and a half for the other part. I did vote yes, because I think that we do need a new one. I think that it has great possibilities. But had it been a nine million dollar stadium, I'd voted no.
So we have a motion in a second.
Second.
Do we wanna call the vote?
No, I wanna understand what the motion is before I do.
The motion is for the eight point two five million dollar memorandum of agreement for you entirely. The only change to that is in paragraph six, where we're gonna have enacted ordinance. And, uh, designate the specific number of the enacted ordinance, NC five forty-one. Other than that, eight point two five million with a hard cap. It was seconded by Mr. Stevens.
Okay, eight point two five, hard cap.
Hard cap, eight point two five. It was a motion made by Mr. Thorpe, seconded by Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. I'm clear. Any, any other comments? Quickly.
I don't think.
That's for the tax.
I don't think if you could call for comments.
No. I can't?
No, there's a, when there's a motion in a second.
Okay, we'll call for a vote. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Caffey?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thorpe?
Yes.
Ms. Mede?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.